Everybody's got their. Book back loaded?
Yeah.
Yep, great. Um, okay, um. I like to call the regularly scheduled board of selectmen meeting from Monday, April first, twenty twenty four to order. First order of business is pledge of allegiance. Charles, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Item two, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? As I look out on the zoom, I don't see. Don't see anyone from the public, so we'll move on to item three. That's your approval of minutes, three dot one would be. Moved from the table to the regular meeting minutes that we. Did not approve earlier. Is there a motion to approve, to remove from the table the March fourth regular meeting minutes?
I'll move it.
A second. Changes were made, Susan Sue, to your satisfaction?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, they're good?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, uh, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes, is there a motion?
Some vote.
A second, any comments, questions, changes, suggested changes? Hearing none, uh, let me try your minds, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item four, agricultural commission, Kevin, come on up. Four dot one, consider and take possible action, recommendation from the agricultural commission that oversees. That oversee the management of the recently purchased Sullivan property on Tanner Marsh Road. Kevin?
So the, since we took on the, Tom took on the property, the commission has kind of been watching the property. Looking at the activities or form activities on the property there. At their past couple of meetings. The commission actually is not in here, but took a walk of the property last Monday. And reviewed the fields and stuff there. Commission is interested in being the managing agency. Um, for that property for town.
Do, do they manage any other properties?
Yes, the I commission manages the, um. Dudley, that's four properties, I think, the, um. Dudley Preserve piece on corner of county and West Street. Um, they manage another piece on County Road, which is a former Potter property or known as a Barley property there across from the. The old, um, school there, outdoor education center now. And they manage two activities of a Northern Heights subdivision of grazing and paying operations on the Northern Heights subdivision up there.
So it brought some fields.
Yeah, they do, they, yeah, anything where there might be an agricultural license to a, um, outside vendor. Or the properties they get involved in.
Did they end up getting the hay off of Tanner Marsh Road?
No, the, um, the hay bales are still there from John. Hall, uh, who did it before, it was just summer this past winter and fall is so wet and it's still damp in there.
But he planted doing it.
Yeah, get them out of there, Gary's been conversational with him, it's just, we don't want to destroy the field, but get a machine too early.
You see him from the highway.
Yeah.
He's in there and you see him.
Yeah, there's quite a few fields in town, but I do see the bale still sitting in the middle of them there. So the commission would work on a, uh, license, probably standard to the other fields there to have it. Um, paid on a regular basis there.
Kevin, I know that there was some discussion, uh, about the use of that property. Either for, um, the community garden, um, which I think we've, uh, settled on.
Think they're looking at nut planes right now.
Uh, but, uh, uh, additionally, uh, use of some of the property to extend the New England Trail?
They trail, we, all our properties they have agriculture has trails along the edges of it, so it's allowed. New England Trail does not require a. Improved pathway, I mean, they're hiking through woods and stuff like that, so as long as it's. Done that way, the, the problem right now is the section heading into. The eastern portion of the property towards these river road is really saturated.
Good.
So that's questionable if that's viable without too much yearly maintenance and stuff to maintain a. Walkway or anything on that, that edge there.
Good.
They, they do walk. Tanner Marsh around, um, it's not much of a difference in direction for them. The, the safest thing for them really, I mean, the safe streets and risks is concerned. Is they actually should be going across Route One with the stoplight. And up Claver Hill Road that way, because the trail currently crosses. No interest, no crosswalk, nothing, uh, at that. Three of that triangle intersection on Route One, which is probably one of the biggest hazards. Areas with conflicting traffic limit there. But it could be available. Because they said they don't require, it's hiking trails, it doesn't require any improvements. I mean, we mow most of our properties to maintain the ideas from growing invasive, so there's always a pathway around the edges that. Anybody can hike and walk around.
All right, so, uh, nothing in this decision to allow the I commission to. Manage the property would conclude us, uh, from utilizing that as an extension of the trail when appropriate?
Yeah, if it's, yeah, appropriate, when it's appropriate, when they're looking for it there. Probably it said it's, we all our licenses, we put in there of a trail, um, along the edges, so just make sure when we write the license that it's. That trail on the, the edges is permitted there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't giving up the, uh, the, the ability to, to utilize that for the trails, so we're good.
You want a motion, yes?
Uh, yes.
I'll move, uh. That we allow the X Society oversight.
Commission. It gets confused in town.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try my select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? All right, that motion carries, Kevin, thank you very much.
Yep.
We have a bit of a misprint here. It's not Kevin, under agricultural commission. This is related to, uh, resolution for the Volkswagen E B S E grant electric charging stations. This is for the charging stations that we've put in, uh, the additional charging stations at Town Hall South. The ones over, um, behind, uh, the, the shops on Woodhill Street, um, it's over, actually, I think on the corner of. Gilford's, uh, building, uh, on the backside of that building. And then, uh, hopefully soon to be completed, uh, charging stations over at, uh, the community center. Where we are still having challenges with the, um. Department of Transportation of all people, and EverSource Department of Transportation has a, um. A little known statutory requirement, uh, around. Their easement, uh, because that is seventy seven, that's, uh, and the state easement, uh, extends fifty feet or whatever it is. And in order to, uh, to bury it underground wire. You need to.
Airway.
Well, it's not, it's, it's EverSource, it would be EverSource's wire, but the EverSource doesn't actually do the trenching work. And EverSource is required by D O T to sign the per sign off on the permit as well as be a co sponsor on the permit. EverSource is not willing to do that because they're not doing the work themselves, um, and this is, this is turning into, uh, somewhat of a problem. Not only for us, but for other municipalities, because, uh, EverSource is digging their heels in. And then, uh, ironically, across the street where, uh, selectman Federici is, uh, renovating his house, uh. He is looking to do buried, uh, and running into the same problem with, uh, uh, D O T and EverSource, so.
I did have one question, I mean, this is Volkswagen, I mean, this charging station on the university.
Yeah, the, the, that's the name of the grant fund, that's where, this was the Volkswagen, uh, penalty that they wound up paying. To the U S government for, uh, the.
That these things, yes. I just wanted to make sure that all the, my understanding is they're sort of universal, they have adapters and stuff.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 this is not, this is not specific to Volkswagen, uh, vehicles.
Okay, so what do we need your motion?
Just a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move it.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, uh, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye. Where would it be at the community center?
Been looking to put it on the, um, as you look at the, uh, the, the building from the road, the parking lot, uh, side to the right. Right up against, it'd be the last couple of spaces, right, the most, most closely, uh, aligned to the road. And the idea of putting another pole there is, you know, just ridiculous. So now there's an alternative, we could trench it from the feed from, uh, uh, the, uh, the, the building, but that would be. Far more disruptive.
Maybe just put the two, you know, next to the building. You know, like, you know where the loading station is, that's kind of always problematic anyway, that might be.
It's not a bad idea, let's, let me check with the, uh.
Get behind me. Then you deal with the bureaucracy, you could have it done.
Not a bad idea, that's a good, good suggestion.
We could connect loose wires to the building too.
Okay, um. All right, so we have resolution and, uh, and. And it's passed, right? Okay. Item five, parking wrecks, um. Both of you coming up, Terry's coming up? Terry, uh, five dot one is.
I'm just, I'm a support system.
Discuss and take possible action on the grant application for the new senior bus authorized for selectmen to sign. Good morning.
Hi.
How are you?
Okay.
So, so for those who are unfamiliar, this is, uh, becoming almost an annual event. Terry, you just want to talk a little bit about this program?
Yeah, well, this is the fifty three ten, it's a federal program run through the state D O T. Um, the last, we've got two buses through this program, it's an eighty twenty match. Uh, we have a twenty eighteen bus was the first one we bought with this grant. And then we also have a twenty twenty one bus, they're both twenty passenger buses that we bought with this. They did not run the program last year, so we, we didn't apply, but it's back again this year. So, um, I'm recommending that we apply again for another twenty passenger. Right now, we have three buses and a van, a car, a Honda Odyssey car. We generally have four, operate with four buses. There's a, uh, twelve passenger bus, a two thousand nine, that this fall, we just, between the public works and I, we decided to retire. It wasn't safe anymore, um, had, you know, too many issues with it. Um, that's when we bought, we had bought that one outright with the town money, the, um. Four five eight bus, um, so that's a smaller bus though. One of the other issues running in with buses right now is, it's hard to get C B L drivers. So we do have two drivers now that only have the passenger endorsement, they can't drive the twenty passengers. So it, it was important that we have at least one smaller vehicle that can be driven by a driver that just has the passenger endorsement, and that's the, um.
But this, this grant is for another twenty.
Right, right, because what we're doing is thinking down the line, because the twenty eighteen bus technically is. Just past its useful life, even though it's, we're going to keep operating it, it's still.
This might be.
It'll be an eventual, eventually replace that.
Idea was to get smaller ones, I mean, how often is a twenty, uh, twenty passenger one full?
Well, no, no, mostly trips, most, mostly trips, other than that, you know, no, um.
Should have one or two of the twenty passenger, the smaller ones.
Right, right, and the other, because the other issue that happens is when you pull one out for service.
I mean, there's got to be something between a Honda van and a twenty passenger bus, now they have all these transits and.
That's the, um, the one we bought last year outright, with just town capital, and that has a, that's a fourteen passenger.
Does that require a C D L?
No, that's, that's why we got one that's smaller, you just need a passenger endorsement to drive that.
Doesn't just take about a year to get.
And it's going to be one to one and a half years before we physically get the bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're just kind of looking down the road and, you know, once pulled out of service and we have, need two buses for a trip. And we're, you know, stuck with no bus, we end up having to turn people down, which I don't like to do.
Okay, so need a motion?
Uh, yeah, I do need a motion.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
This, this grant, uh, runs through the council of governments, if I'm not mistaken.
I have to send a copy to the council governments and, um, D O T, when it's submitted, submitted to both.
Right, and I have an authority that they're going to support our grant applications, council governments, it's, it's our turn.
Well, we haven't gotten one since that twenty, would be the twenty nineteen bus, which we applied, would have been all back, so, or twenty twenty one bus. So it's, it's been a few years since we've gotten anything from the state, and so, and we have, um. Let's see, we drive approximately, I just did this statistic, approximately sixty thousand miles a year. We drive.
We won't get this bus for a year, will it be a twenty twenty five or?
It'll probably be a twenty twenty five, yeah. It has to.
Building it, it doesn't take that long to build, it's just, we're in the queue.
No, you're dealing with the state, so, just, it just takes a while to get everything done.
Yeah, and this, uh, and this grant will cover eighty percent of the costs.
And covers eighty percent of the cost.
We have a twenty percent match that we have to put in, which would have.
And the car, the, the twenty twenty one bus we bought was about seventy thousand dollars. This one is going to be a hundred and forty, the costs have doubled.
Question?
It's another reason to try to go for the grant.
So.
I'm wondering, the, the town share, will that come from program funds?
I'm sorry.
Town, the town share?
Um, Mary Jane has it in capital, we, we, there's money set aside every year as a replacement, um. We move forward and we haven't, we didn't even use it last year, so it's carried forward, Mary, Mary Jane has said.
In capital for current year.
It's capital money that has been set aside.
For the current year, I'm looking, I was looking at next year, we're talking about current year budget, right, is that the case?
Yeah, she has, and it's been continued in force also, I thought Mary Jane, I, she's aware of it, she said she knows. Oh, she's in there, oh.
Uh, yeah, so we have money, um, for this bus in a couple, uh, locations. We have some grant funds that were left over from a prior year that we didn't allocate, um, so we are going to use that for this. And we also have money that we had set aside for the potential, um, of a new bus in a prior year, so I have that in carried in force. So the money is already set aside, not even in this upcoming budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, uh, let me try your minds? Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries, thank you, just want to, uh. Pam and I had a conversation a little over a week ago, maybe two weeks now, just time runs away. Uh, about that exact question that Charlie's talking about, uh, looking at the fleet going forward, do we invest more? Uh, in the vans, uh, you know, the, the Odyssey type vans, uh, because of. The, uh, infrequency with which we're filling up those, uh, those buses, um, so that's, uh, it's on Pam's radar moving forward, so.
Yeah, I think they even make, you know, one step above the, the minivans too, right?
Got it.
What they are, transits, I think they call it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. All right, um, appointments and resignations, um. Item six, six dot one, act on recommendation to reappoint Al DiMarzio to the Marina Commission for a term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, six dot two, um, act on recommendation to move Christine Manon from alternate to a regular member. On the Youth and Family Services Board for a term to expire September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty six, is there a motion?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, uh, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Act on a recommendation to appoint Megan Lee as an alternate to the Youth and Family Services Board to fill a vacancy. For a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty six, is there a motion?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, uh, right, uh, we have two seconds, uh, let me try your minds, uh, select woman, uh, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Six dot four, act on a removal, uh, removal of Patricia Keegan from the Conservation Commission per chapter four dot three of the town charter. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let, let me give a little explanation on this, um, this individual, uh, has not been attending any of the meetings, uh, for quite some time. The commission per the charter has requested, um, that we replace her with someone who is, um, more able to participate or willing, whichever it is. So the process has been, uh, that, the, the process that's in place is the commission sends a letter asking for us to consider this. We reach out to, uh, the individual who I do not believe has even responded, uh, to, uh, the request that came from my office. About, uh, interest in continuing to serve, so, um, at this point, um. We're, we're, we're acting to remove so that someone, we can bring somebody else on. All right.
Um, she didn't take advantage of all the various options that you outlined in that letter.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, commission members have reached out to her, I've reached out to her.
Okay.
Okay. I'm wondering, um, of, of course, if someone's not attending meetings, that's the, you know, showing up is what, whatever that expression is. Um, so yes, that spot should be vacated for someone who can fulfill that obligation. Would it be possible, I would like to reach out to the nominating, or to, to the Republican Town Committee people. To bring this to their attention, to, as a courtesy, to give them the opportunity to either contact her themselves or respond to it. Only because, um. There's been statements made that we have not given their candidates adequate opportunities. And if we remove this person, I don't think we've taken this action in our six years.
Yeah.
Together, um, if we were to remove her and, and she, her position was replaced by someone from a different party. It might. Sort of perpetuate that whole.
Susan, are you comfortable with reaching out to the party, or do you want, uh, for selectmen's office to do it?
I'm, I'm comfortable doing that if that's what you all think is best.
I have no problem enabling it until the next meeting.
And just until the next meeting.
Weeks of each one.
Right, no longer than that.
Yeah, that sounds fair, that sounds, very, very fair, I could, I could.
And you're going to reach out, right?
I'll do it as soon as we're done with the meeting.
That's a good idea, because, I mean, some of the, um, comments have, I don't necessarily substantiate them, but why not?
Right.
Go this route, which will prove that we are trying our best to be there.
Exactly.
So thank you, so is there a motion to table? Motion to table?
Second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, um, item seven, uh, seven dot one, act on a request. From the Guilford High School to place a sign on the green, advertising its flamingo flocking. Project graduation taking place May, uh, March seventeenth through May thirty one, twenty twenty four. Um, is there a motion?
I'll move it, I mean, they're not talking about putting in flamingos, they're just assigning.
No, they put the flamingos, oh, you mean, no, not on the green, they go in people's houses. Vons.
There we go.
Yeah, we go back to the flamingos, yeah.
Put them up under the closet. See if they float.
So you made a motion, right?
Yes, and a second, all right, uh, let me try your minds, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Thanks, Kevin. Uh, item eight, act on request from Guilford today to place an unattended display of, unattended display of purple flags. Uh, slash ribbons on the green and a sign promoting day, week and its, uh, Chris Herren event taking place May twenty first, twenty, twenty four. Sign placement five seven to five twenty four, is there a motion?
Some vote.
And a second, uh, let me try your minds, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye.
This is the one we sent back to them, because we had a question about where the place was going to be or something, yeah.
Right.
You notice they did the application in purple, I thought that was very.
Yes. Yes, just the signs, okay. Um, all right, uh, committee reports, Sandy?
Nothing at the moment.
Uh, correspondents, anybody have anything?
Well, we've all gotten letters, like, you know, and to expand on Sandy's point, at the last meeting, we do read them all.
Oh, yes.
Okay, and I, I've gotten a couple of comments that. Using myself being almost rude, they don't respond.
Yep.
And, uh, when their opinion pieces and things like that, I do not respond, just simply, uh, whether it be. For whatever reason, F Y or all those other things, I'm not going to engage in conversations about opinion, I'll acknowledge them. Uh, by reading them, I'm not going to engage in conversation, so I just wanted to. Point out at this meeting that we're all receiving. Letters, let's put it that way.
Agreed, agreed. There are far too many, they're not far too many, but, uh, the, the challenge is, we end up going down a rabbit hole, back and forth, back and forth.
Well, I mean, when they're stating their positions or opinions, I respect that and, and I'll read it. I'm not going to engage in conversations about it, right, that's what a public meeting is for, not with these meetings.
All right, thank you, Charles, um, old business, we have one piece of old business. Chief is here, uh, M J is also here, uh, the chief brings good news, uh, I think it was Friday, he said. Well, the good, the, 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 the bad news is they made a mistake on the, uh, request for funding for the, uh, additional bays. Um, for the fire department, the good news is they asked for too much because of a misinterpretation of the bid, uh, that, the, the, the bid that was, uh, selected.
We assumed.
We assumed, that's right, so if, uh, Mary Jane or chief want to go through some of the details on that, uh, I would, that would, that would, very, come on up, chief.
I'll, I'll, I'll be more.
And I know Mike is on the line as well, because.
Yes, 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 you know, I was reviewing the A I A contract, we were going to go to you. And I noticed that the price was significantly different, so I thought one of us made a mistake. So I reached out to the contractor and we made the mistake.
Okay.
Okay, so basically what we did is we took the base bid price, which what we thought was. The, they're set, the base bid price and the alternates were separate, indeed, all the alternates were already added into the bid. Okay, so we should have subtracted ninety three thousand, three hundred and sixty. Uh, from the contractor for under construction. Instead of adding, so, so the, the amount of the P O should have been one thousand, one hundred and ninety eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty five fifty eight. Mary Jane will check my math, because I've been messing myself up all, all weekend over it.
M J?
Uh, yeah, well, uh, I haven't looked at it too closely, but I just wanted to make the recommendation that we reduce the amount that we are relying on ARPA. For this, um, so we had approved five hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and twenty eight dollars from ARPA. This reduction would bring that down to three hundred and seventy two thousand, four hundred and thirty five dollars.
We agree.
We agree.
You agree on the numbers?
We agree.
All right.
What's the total for this?
The, the total for the contingency is going to be, uh. Toward the closer to product, it would be one million, three seventy eight, five thirty, four forty two, fifteen percent contingency, is that right, Mary Jane?
Uh, yeah, I wrote down a diff, I wrote down a slightly different number, but.
Okay, yeah, because I, I got fifteen percent, one hundred seventy nine thousand, eight oh eight eighty four, right?
Right. I just had one million, three eighty seven, I don't know which, you said three seventy eight, I don't know if I wrote it down wrong.
I'll go with your number.
I could have, I could have transposed the number as I wrote it down.
Round numbers.
But the bottom line is, we're saving two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and ninety three dollars.
Three dollars, that's right. That, as, which will go back into American Rescue, will not come out of American Rescue Plan funds. Which means we now have, uh, closer to four hundred, over four hundred thousand, uh, remaining, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Correct, I was down to about two hundred, so now we're a little over four.
Got it, okay, all right, is there a motion to revise the, the appropriation, additional appropriation? From the five hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and twenty eight to three hundred and seventy two thousand, four hundred and thirty five, uh, dollars, which will come from American Rescue Plan funds. So, in a second.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? Keep bringing us good news like this, um, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye. Sandy?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carries, thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Alright, uh, anybody have anything on their new business? Okay, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none, um, we've got, uh, an executive session. We'd like to add one item to executive session, and that would be discussion of, um, uh, OPEC benefits. Uh, for purposes of negotiations. Is there a motion to add that? And a second? We got a second one to beat them on. Uh, selectone, uh, let me try your minds, selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Before we do that, can we just, in case people don't come back, can we just remind people about tomorrow's meeting?
Yes, uh, yes, we can. Tomorrow, the, there is a meeting, you know, budget meeting is, uh, at the high school at seven-thirty. Uh, where registered voters will be able to participate, uh, in voting to move, uh, or to moving the budget to. Uh, uh, to referendum as per the charter, so, uh, people have a, at the high school, at the high school auditorium. People will have the opportunity, uh, to comment on, uh, either in support or against the.
So it isn't just a resident of Guilford, you have to be a registered voter resident?
Right, uh, uh, no, you, you have to be either a registered voter or a property owner. Uh, and you need, if you're a property owner, you need to bring proof of, uh, same, so.
Okay.
Alright, um, so, could, uh, we're gonna try to, we're gonna get through the, uh, appeals first.
Okay.
Just a couple of minutes to, to get that, cause we've got, uh. Yeah, just, yeah.
So I'll be, uh, I'll give you a shout. And we want Mary Jane in for this, for our part, so.
What's that? Okay, uh. Is there a motion come out of executive session?
Some moved, second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, uh, selectwoman Renner. Aye, good, uh, and then those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Um, in executive session, there were no motions made, no actions taken, um. But as a result of discussions, um, is there a motion to approve, uh, the four, uh, appeals that we deemed, uh, worth granting?
Some moved.
Second.
Second. Any, uh, further comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, let me try your minds, uh, selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
And those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you all, uh, with nothing left to attend to, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
And a second? Uh, selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you all, good discussions today.